I would like to open the meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's Board of Education for September 27, 2016. Mr. Matzouka, would you lead us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Would you please rise? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
I'd like to let people know that we have Spanish translation. Si gustan escuchar la junta en español, si hay traducción, please indicate if you wish translation. Also, headsets for the hearing impaired are available, please indicate if you need a headset. Superintendent's report.
I've continued to get out to back-to-school nights. I think I've only missed a couple, been able to get to all of them. It's good to see the parents, especially good to see the staff having a chance to share their work with the parents who come. I will comment, I heard a lot about the heat wave last year, and this is pretty tough, and when these temperatures hit, I was out at schools both yesterday and today, and I can really see how challenging it is to our schools, to our staffs. I mean, everybody kept on, they carried on, but I was meeting in the San Marcos front office, and after a while, we just had to get out of this little office. It's just really, really challenging conditions. So, I appreciate our staff. I sent out a note to everybody, just thanking them for their professionalism. I wish we could solve it, but it's not a simple problem to solve. And then, I'll just share, I've been sharing pretty openly, I missed the last board meeting because my father had just passed away. That was two weeks ago today, and I appreciate all the flowers, the notes, the support of the board, support of cabinet, the support's been great. I feel so new here, it's like I don't even know people, but the warmth has been tremendous, so thank you to everyone. Kind of puts your work in a perspective, when you think about, you know, life and death. So, we're still planning my dad's memorial service, it'll come up in a week and a half. So, it's been some good family times, hard but good. So, thanks for everybody's support, appreciate it.
You're most welcome, and some of us can relate and have that experience in our lives, so we are still in spirit with you. Board, any comments or correspondence?
I mentioned the Day of Caring. Mr. Limone and myself were at the breakfast, had the pleasure of seeing those public drum corps come marching in, and then the San Marcos madrigals singing the National Anthem, and then SBCC cheerleaders. You add all that together, it really kicks off the morning. So, it's just a great day. I did make the rounds and went to Adams, Lacungra, Monroe, Harding, Community Academy, Franklin, LaCuesta, Gila Valley, DP, and it was nice. The interest burst in there was a Santa Marcos water polo game that I also got to see, which was good. But, it was great seeing the community members that show up for Day of Caring by United Way. They send out teams of people to all these different places to help out. But also, Montpello, it's good to see some of the principals with holes and rakes in their hands, staff with rakes and holes, spreading mulch, parents, kids, family affair in many cases. And to see that whole group come together on a campus, beautifying it for the good of our students, every year, it's the same. It's just a fantastic experience to watch that take place and watch it happen. So, I really appreciate that day. Last meeting, I didn't mention, I didn't give the name, but Adelante was in the process of hiring a new executive director and principal, and since then, they have hired him, and started work Monday. His name is David Bartista. He comes from Oregon, he was Department of Education in Oregon, has the Education Equity Unit responsible for English learning programs and outcomes. His job was to focus on the opportunity gap for cultural and linguistically divorced students. So, he comes with a tremendous background, and Adelante is happy as can be. There is an informal coffee forum Thursday morning at 8:00, just to meet and greet, say hi to him if anybody's interested. But hopefully, I haven't met him yet, but he has a great reputation, and Adelante's had a great seven years under Juanita, and this might even be the impetus to get him to go even bigger and better. So, we need some space. Thank you.
Ms. Parker.
Well, I did get a chance to meet him briefly, because one of the things that our district participated in last week was a regional, well, you know, we've talked in the past about the district's quarterly science leadership meetings, and now it's become a regional effort. And so, the team from BCI was down from the Lawrence Hall of Science, at least for now, called the Channel Islands Regional Science Initiative, and there were a number of people that are in this room right now that were there, and Carpenter Unified was there, all of our partner elementary districts, and then the charters were there, including Adelante, and their principal-to-be, he was down for the day, so he was able to participate in that, too. So, it was a pleasure to meet him, and that was a great day for science planning in our district.
No other comments? If not, we'll move on to item number seven, announcement of closed session action, nothing to report. So, we move on to item number eight, which is public comments on non-adjunct matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. I think we have a few speakers.
We have Kenneth Locke first, and then Jeffrey Walker. You'll have three minutes, and I'll let you know when you're coming up on 30 seconds to the finish.
Thank you. My name is Kenneth Locke. I've been away for the summer, just getting back. Now that I'm in the community, I've just taken the opportunity to speak before you guys and let you know what I've been thinking lately about when it comes to fitness, mind-body fitness for the kids, PE. It's really important that we recognize what it means to be mentally fit, what that means, and that's directly related to being physically fit. So, the idea is to be mentally and physically fit, it's kind of all or nothing, and if you're not mentally fit, it does not provide you the means for becoming physically fit, again, because the two are actually interrelated. And I'm sorry to inform tennis players, that's kind of the discipline that I represent, kind of the first teacher healer in relation to that level of fitness, I'm sorry to inform tennis players, that the development of one arm is, does not promote mental fitness or physical fitness. And the idea that, and the idea of the sports, the sport of tennis competition, it, again, it doesn't increase a child's intelligence in relation to ultimately what it means to be physically fit, and the idea is that if a person, I did a tweet on Twitter saying if a tennis player doesn't have the ability to recognize how unhealthy it is to develop one arm, they're actually mentally retarded, in a sense that they don't have the intelligence enough to actually realize and recognize just how unhealthy it is, and for whatever reason, in our culture, we've kind of collectively ignored that, and I just have been given the responsibility, or whatever, the job, to just kind of turn the light on this and then share it even within this community, or in the big community. But, yeah, I just thought I'd take the time to do that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we have Jeffrey Walker.
I'm not happy I gave up tennis a while ago. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeffrey Walker. I am, until Friday afternoon, still the executive director of ICANN, the Incredible Children's Art Network. This will be my last appearance before this board, and I wanted to share some information with you about the sunsetting of our incredible organization, and to share with the board, superintendent, and administration, and public, the very conscious and deliberate co-investments and investments that ICANN has made in the community as we exit as a programmatic foundation. So, pardon me, but I'd like to rattle off a few names and numbers, just to be clear. First, we're very proud to have invested with the district a quarter million dollars, $250,000 in the Elementary Visual Arts Program this year. In addition, we have supplied $147,000 worth of in-kind equipment and materials to the seven schools that we had previously served. We recognize the decision made by the district to not accept our offer of $330,000 for additional Also, for the students within the district, in one way or another, we have contributed $1,300 of in-kind equipment to VADA, through the Friends of VADA, and nearly $500 in in-kind equipment to the Library and Media Center at Santa Barbara High School. Also, working closely with Santa Barbara Symphony, the Santa Barbara Bowl, the Mosher Foundation, and the district, together with Donna Ronzoni's leadership and that of Dr. Amy Williams at the Symphony, we have given a cash grant of $30,000 to the Symphony, and $15,000 worth of instruments, musical equipment, music stands, chairs, et cetera, and extra strings. So, that's an effort on our part, as we exit the after-school music space, to convene a community collaboration to provide more support for the pre-existing Bravo program. So, Bravo's longstanding budget of $30,000 from the district will now be increased to $121,000 going into next year. Also, at Adelante Charter School, where we started our programs 11 years ago, we've given a $30,000 grant and $10,000 of in-kind equipment and materials.
30 seconds.
This will be my last time, if I could have a couple more seconds, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I also want to make it clear that we have contributed to over 30 other organizations throughout the Santa Barbara area that are involved, 15 of them involved with arts education, visual arts, theater, dance, music, special needs and youth development organizations, science and technology education organizations, environmental education, and historical preservation. So, the sum total of those in-kind grants to those organizations is over $23,000. My only joy shutting down my organization this summer has been handing out things at the door. My desk goes tomorrow. So, and finally, because our vision has always been around countywide service, I'm especially proud to say that we have granted over $49,000 worth of in-kind instruments and arts equipment to the following, $25,000 to Lampoc Unified School District with a focus on their wonderful, wonderful Lasperos Visual and Performing Arts Academy and their Cabrillo High School. Also, in Santa Maria, Santa Maria Bonita District, Orchid Union, Santa Maria Parks and Rec, and McKenzie Junior High in Guadalupe. So, I've had a very busy summer as we wind down. So, I just want to thank this district and this board for the privilege of working with you. My wife and I are moving back to Monterey County next week. Thank you.
Board, I know there's some comments.
I know, I was gonna say, we're gonna be all fighting over the mic to say thank you, thank you to ICANN, thank you to everybody. I don't think our community can ever thank this organization enough, and please know that we are in such a better place because of the work that has been done, and I really have hope. I don't think it can be, I know it can't be the same without ICANN, but it will still be very good. So, from the bottom of all of our hearts, thank you, and good luck, and keep in touch.
I would agree with those words, I can't put it much better. So, thank you, Jeffrey. It's been a pleasure working with you all these years. Thank you for Adelante, for supporting them all these years, and all that you've done for all of our schools. Appreciate it.
We'll come this way. Ms. Limone.
All right. Thank you. You can move back to the front. As a matter of fact, this week, I talked to two families at two of our Eastside Schools who were talking about what will happen to the arts, music, without ICANN, and so I think that that speaks to the lives that you've touched. I also feel that our district wouldn't have been able to do or touch so many lives of students who wouldn't have otherwise gotten this experience if it hadn't been for ICANN. So, it's important, it's been a transition for us, too. I think we've gone through it, and maybe it hasn't ended up as the way that we would have liked to, and we would have loved to have duplicated exactly what you have done, but you do leave more than the amazing monetary contributions and instrument contributions and so much that you've done. You really leave also the love of pursuing music and art classes, and that is a big deal. Thank you, you will be missed.
Hard to beat all of this that's been said, but you know, what strikes me is how ICANN has individually touched so many students' lives and made the arts and music so positive for them, and from what, you know, we've all heard and felt in viewing it, it's just been an incredible experience, and that's, you know, hard to beat, but hopefully, the example has been set, and the bar is very high, and I think everybody can see what we need to strive for. So, thank you very much to the organization and to you, Mr. Walker.
I would echo everyone's comments and say that you are leaving a huge legacy to uphold, and that is going to be challenging for us as a district, as a community, and personally, as an individual, I want to thank you, you know, for all the work you're gonna leave a void. Your leadership in this area and the community is going to be greatly missed. I will miss working with you and having not had enough conversations with you, and so I wish you the best in Monterey, and please, come and visit. The school doors are open for you. Thank you.
One more thing. Please, tell Mr. Kearns that everything that was said here about you is about him also and your entire staff over the years.
Yes.
Without the staff that you provided, without Mr. Kearns' leadership and your involvement, it wouldn't have happened. So, thank Mr. Kearns for us.
I certainly will. I do know he watches the videos frequently.
Oh.
Thank you very much for all of those wonderful comments. I would just conclude by saying, there are so many great arts education and youth development partners in this community, we've had the privilege of working with them. Everyone's leaning in right now with you to make this the most successful period in Santa Barbara district's history, with new leadership and all of this great collaboration. It's also the Santa Barbara County Alliance for Arts Education, which is a new force in the community that connects you to the conversation at the statewide level and the national level. If you saw in the morning news, Irvine Company just gave $20 million to that district to support technology and arts education. Those two can coexist, and they do. So, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you again.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Thank you. I would say that one's gonna be a difficult one to top on the rest of the agenda. We will move on to consent items. Board, are there any items you would like to pull? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Idelson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We will then move on to the action agenda. First item is board action for petition for readmission of an expelled student, education code 48918, case number 201415-02.
I'll move the readmission from expulsion for case number 201415-02.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Herron, seconded by Ms. Parker. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Item number two, board action on petition for readmission of an expelled student, education code 48918, case number 201516-27.
I'll move the reentry from expulsion for case number 201516-27.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Herron, seconded by Ms. Parker. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. We move on to number, actually, agenda item number three, board action on student discipline education code 48918, case number 201617-02.
I'll move approval of the stipulation agreement, expulsion enforcement is suspended in case number 201617-02.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Herron, seconded by Ms. Parker. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Move on to item number four, board action on student discipline education code 48918, case number 201617-03.
I will move to approve the stipulation agreement for expulsion with enforcement suspended for 201617-03.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Herron, seconded by Ms. Parker. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. We move on to item number five, and we have a speaker for this item. Approval Resolution 201617-10 in support and recognition of October as Dyslexia Awareness Month. Ms. Sheri Ray, would you like to speak?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm so pleased that you're recognizing Dyslexia Awareness Month in October. It's important to the one in five people who have dyslexia that it be recognized every month, and in fact, all the time, because it's something that is with us all the time. I wanted to show you an example of something, people who have dyslexia have trouble with print, and this is an example of a child who created something that's actually quite lovely, and the sentiment is lovely, but couldn't quite express it. And what it says here, in this very tortured writing, is "Thank you, wind, for cooling me off and making a wonderful sound when you hit pine trees." A child who can really express something beautiful, but not with print, and that's the problem for people with dyslexia. But I also wanted to give you some statistics. Thirty-five percent of our entrepreneurs have dyslexia, forty percent of our self-made millionaires have dyslexia, fifty percent of our NASA scientists have dyslexia, and people who are dyslexic are brilliant in four, five particular areas, and that includes entrepreneurism, engineering, arts and athletics, and architecture. So, back, there used to be legislation about dyslexia a long time ago, and there was a handbook called ICAN Learn. This was in effect from the early 90s for about four or five years, and then it went away, and I'm happy to say that by next year, 2017, 2018, we'll have the provisions for AB 1369, which will bring another Dyslexia Handbook out with recommendations about what to do in the classroom. So, this time next year, we'll already have guidelines, and they'll be on the internet rather, and on the websites. So, we won't have a handbook anymore, but we will have information, which is going to help things quite a bit. And I want to show you one more little item. Some of you know that I go to schools and I usually talk to third graders. Last week, I was at Peabody School, talking to third graders about dyslexia. I have a whole binder full of thank you notes, but one in particular that really touches me, because it's obvious that the little girl who wrote it has dyslexia, and it says, "Thank you for teaching me about that people that have dyslexia and can still change the world." And her name is Jacqueline, and I really wish her name was Anna, or something that was a lot easier to spell, but that's her name, and it's very nice that she said thank you, and thank you to you for recognizing dyslexia this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, Ms. Parker.
I think that we always have to thank Ms. Ray with the incredible effort that she puts into raising awareness around dyslexia, and I hope in the coming years that we will actually, as a district, take this on in a way that moves us past the state minimums of what we should do, and really become leaders in what can be done at the school district level for students with dyslexia.
Ms. Herron.
Yeah, and while reading this and reading the correspondence we got in the past week, I went through my file that Joan Esposito left me before she retired, and came across the task force from June 21, 1990, with their recommendations on dyslexia, with 11 supporting recommendations. I did email all two of you, so I hope you had a chance to read it, but 26 years ago, and I'd be curious to know how many of those things have been implemented to a degree that maybe they should have been over the years. So, maybe we can start afresh, anew. I would love to see some reports from schools as to what they do about a resolution like this, or any of our resolutions that we pass. Nice words, but what happens in the classroom, what happens with the teachers, what happens in our system, and so if there was a way to get a report back at some point on some of the things that take place. I know Disability Days, we do get reports on that once in a while, but it might be nice to get reports on some of these resolutions where we urge our educators to be involved. So, I would like to move approval of this resolution and hope that somebody's prepared to read it.
Mr. Matzouka.
Before we move on, I just want to share, I had a conversation with Sheri Ray. She came to my office, and we had a delightful conversation. That one in five statistic really jumped out at me, and I would say right now, we have a lot on our plates. Awareness is probably the right step for us, but at some point, we have to move past awareness to what are we gonna do about this? And special ed, as I'm learning, is, you know, we have lots of challenges. I'm just gonna integrate this into, you know, what do we do with dyslexia in the context of special ed? But the one in five, that's, it means that in this room, if you just look around, there's probably three or four of us who have had dyslexia or have it, and just, and have coped with it. I've worked with a lot of professionals that I've come to learn have overcome dyslexia. So, that statistic is a very real one, so we need to respond.
Ms. Idelson.
I want to say that I think the awareness and identification, because that one in five, yes, that's huge, and yet, those children, students are making their way through school and having to compensate and pedal so fast to keep up, that identification and education for the staff, so that teachers aren't just putting, lumping those children in a category of slow reader, or somebody who's challenged, but actually identifying and helping those students in a way that's appropriate for those students. It's so real in our schools and our children, it's incredible. Thank you.
Ms. Limone.
I would echo what's been said. This past weekend, I was actually up in the valley, and a gentleman was talking to me about dyslexia, because he, in the 1960s, was diagnosed with dyslexia, and we talked so much about the stigma, and, I mean, he is an older man, but he was so focused on what are we doing now, and so, we've had small gains, but I'll take them, because by talking to him, I realized, wow, he has not forgotten his experience, and it really left a bad, negative impression on him as far as what he went through in school. I also would say that, I want to add that one of the higher ed issues we see, too, is that because they are pedaling so fast and figuring out a way to go through the K-12 system, it's harder to pedal that fast in higher ed. It comes at a standstill, because learning is different, and so, and the school's different, everything's different, the environment's different, so we definitely, we see it, and it doesn't always play itself out in the most conducive way for learning when it's in higher ed, because we weren't able to address it and find the appropriate intervention. So, thank you for all you've done for our district, for our awareness and our education, really related to the matter, but it's clear that there's folks in the community that want to know, what do we do? How do we move forward with some of these issues, especially if it's one in five?
Do we have someone who's willing to read?
I'd be glad to read it.
Thank you.
Resolution in support of recognition of October as National Dyslexia Awareness Month. Whereas Santa Barbara Unified School District recognizes that our children are our most valuable resource, we must provide opportunities to learn and grow. Whereas the United States Department of Health defines dyslexia as an inheritable and highly preventable language-based disability affecting one in five disability affecting one-in-five individuals." Whereas dyslexia, meaning difficulty with words, constitutes one of the several distinct learning disabilities and is characterized by challenges in processing language when decoding oral and written words. Whereas dyslexia deeply affects students' ability to read, write, spell, and comprehend, and may also affect students emotionally and their overall well-being, the National Institute of Child Health and Human Development states that poor literacy is a national health problem because of the ramifications that can last a lifetime. Whereas students with dyslexia, especially those who are not identified and are reading below grade level at the end of third grade, often experience difficulties with depression, anxiety, and poor self-image, and rarely catch up to their peers, and as a result, underperform in school and are at a greater risk for failure and dropping out before completing high school. Whereas with proper identification, appropriate instruction, accommodation, access to assistive technology, support from families, teachers, and friends, individuals with dyslexia can excel in school and employment. Whereas works to inform and empower families, educators, and businesses with the most current research-based practices to promote meaningful literacy development with the goal of preparing individuals for a hopeful and productive future. Whereas each student who struggles to learn is unique and deserves every chance to fulfill his or her potential for a happy and productive life. Whereas in an effort to assist parents, educators, and individuals, the International Dyslexia Association has designated October as Dyslexia Awareness Month. Therefore be it resolved that the Santa Barbara Board of Education does hereby proclaim October 2016 Dyslexia Awareness Month in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and encourage the staff members, families, and the community to collaborate to raise awareness and understanding, in so much as to identify, treat, and prevent problems associated with dyslexia, in order to ensure the success for every student with dyslexia.
I'll make a motion?
We have a motion in a second.
Do we have it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Ms. Parker?
I just need to look at that sentence that says, "Whereas works to inform and empower families, educators, and businesses with the most current research-based practices." Whereas the district works to inform, because everything else starts off in a way that makes sense with a whereas. Does it make sense to add the words "the district"? Whereas the district works to inform and empower families, educators, and businesses with the most current, does that make sense?
Yeah.
I would ask that that be amended and included in the motion.
So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That moves us to Item Number Six, Parcel Tax Measure A and Measure B Oversight Committee Membership. Ms. Matsuka?
I believe this is Mr. Tei?
Barbara.
I don't think Barbara has the background info on this.
Do we need to pull it to the next meeting?
It's the membership?
Okay. It's okay. We'll postpone this until the next meeting. Thank you. We will move on to the conference agenda. I believe we're moving item, switching Items One and Four. Is that correct? So, instead of Item Number One, as stated on the agenda, we're actually going to the one-to-one pilot report, and then we will come back later on the agenda, Family Engagement Services Proposal. Ms. Matsuka?
So, I missed the discussion about this, and, but we have talked about this at various times, about technology and the plans and the iPad pilot. So, the board requested some evaluation and feedback about the iPad pilot program. Todd and I in Cabinet talked about the instructional material budget request. We're just going to table that until after this item is heard and discussed by the board. I mean, there is a timeliness to purchase of the technology for that, but it's not like we need it next week. So, I really wanted to hear the discussion with the board, because this is a big one. It's a three-year program. I need to catch up to the history. So, Todd's going to provide the report, and we'll be glad to respond to questions.
Thank you, Ms. Matsuka, and Dr. Paz, and the rest of the board. I provided you the report. I don't want to read it to you, because I assume that you read it. So, I'm here to answer questions about it, and I asked Dr. Alzina and Ms. Simmons to join us to answer any questions that you might have.
Cricket's chirping. We need Dr. Paz to give us, to recognize us, right? I think, if I may, Dr. Paz, that my, in looking at this, it's kind of a summary of where, how far we've come and what's happened. It doesn't necessarily provide recommendations in terms of, it's more reflective than it is, you know, what should we do next? And maybe this is one where we ask the principals that are here, and I don't know if it is the assistant superintendents that might want to chime in. I don't know, I mean, it certainly sounds like it's been a positive program at the schools that it's been in. At one point, the idea was, oh, do we roll this out across the district? I don't know that we have data that says that this is the best way to roll all, you know, tech universally across the district. We have families that want it at other school sites. I don't know if we have principals that want it to this level at other school sites, or if that actually prefer more flexibility. So, that's a question that I have. And then, you know, again, it's so hard to know. Obviously, this one year of test data was quite good for those schools that we're using, for the elementary schools at least that were using it. And I don't know if the extra exposure to just using technology made it so that you could test better. I don't know how to really disaggregate data on that, unless we went down to the level of like, who has these at home and is using them all the time? You know, there are some schools that a lot of classrooms are using them anyway, because principals invested in it. Those are the kind of questions that are running through my head, and I don't know if...
Can we have the principals come up?
Yeah.
And it depends on what we're looking for. The four primary goals of the pilot didn't speak to raising test scores.
So, what immediately comes to mind is my research that I did with my dissertation, and looking at our one-to-one iPad schools. So, I used the three schools, and looked at what types of formative assessments the students are using and the teachers are using, and what are their effects on student learning outcomes. And primarily in reading. And what was just across the board, and looking at high growth amongst students and teachers and trends, was the teachers that were using goal setting and student goal setting. And so, what I saw with the iPad is that the immediate feedback that students got towards their goals, and therefore motivated student learning along their trajectory, made a huge impact on student growth and achievement. So, they kind of go hand in hand, right? So, it's not just the technology, but it is a major component. And so, therefore, that causes us to reflect upon our goals as a school. So, we have our school site plans that have our yearly goals, and then we have also our monthly goals, but what are our weekly goals? Because the students that were making the most amount of growth, the teachers were, again, using the technology to monitor their student goals, not just on a yearly basis, not just a monthly basis, but a weekly basis. So, some of the portals that were used were embedded in the Renaissance learning programs, of course, but also in NEO. So, that did make a big impact. And so, what we saw is some classes even growing as much as a year's worth of growth in two months.
Can I ask a little bit further clarification on that? Because essentially, you're talking about the accelerated reader program as a, which all of our elementary schools have.
Yeah.
And so, I think what I'm hearing is that if, since all of our schools had accelerated readers, but ones that had the iPad program were able to essentially monitor better what was going on on a weekly basis when they set goals for what students would be reading, and what levels they'd be attaining through accelerated readers. Am I...
Correct, because therefore, it's that feedback, and getting that immediate feedback timely, you know, and all the research that says is that the more effective the feedback is, the timely the feedback is, that student gets to reflect upon their learning, then therefore, their learning trajectory skywoks. And that's exactly what we were able to see. So, those teachers, I also saw some teachers that were not using the accelerated reader programs. They were not giving their students feedback. There are also trends in that as well. So, it wasn't just through the technology, but just in feedback in general. And those students did not make as much growth and actually had some declines.
So, it was really ultimately about how the teacher was using the tech, okay? The tech was an important part.
It's going to always be the teacher. It's always going to be the teacher. The teacher's the most important person in the equation. But it also speaks to the equity issue of kids being able to take devices home with them and have access to learning whenever they want, wherever they want. And so, I think that that's one of the huge bumps we're also seeing, is that those students are taking those devices home. We have essentially one-to-one programs, as you point out, at some of our schools, that are not take-home one-to-one programs, but students have devices to use, because principals want to do this, and so, they're finding a way to make it happen with their own site funds. The big difference between those programs and what we're seeing in our one-to-one is those devices really aren't managed at the schools where they're doing it on their own. And also, those devices don't go home with the students, which, like I said, the equity piece is huge to me.
And where we saw great growth is with our third-grade students as well, and not only in reading, but also in math, where we had 67% of our third-grade students meet or exceed the standards on their summative assessment. So, where I am anxious is to continue one-on-one in third grade, because currently, right now, we have a set of about seven iPads in each of my third-grade classrooms, but we are not, we're at a standstill to continue with third grade. And my third-grade teachers keep asking me every day, when are we going to go one-on-one? We need, we need that. Dreambox is a part of our program as well. It's a district, it's a program that the district has adopted, but they use Dreambox at home. So, just like what Todd was saying, the students are able to take the iPads home, they're able to practice Dreambox and bring it back as well. So, as a supplemental to the math program, and that's, you know, in this, with Common Core, when you're giving homework, what do you give, right? It's, parents struggle often. What's an array model? What does that look like? How can I support my child? And so, I think a lot of our technology really lends itself to intuitive, where students can work on it individually.
And it also allows us to leverage NEO and Google Docs more effectively. We can flip the classroom. There's all sorts of strategies that can be used that we can't use unless the students can bring the devices home.
And I guess my final question would be with the two of you up there, that this didn't really delineate, but I can imagine that there's some pretty big differences between elementary and secondary. I mean, I now, I have a student who transitioned from elementary to secondary, and at the junior high level, she really can no longer use the iPad for the work that she needs to do at home. But I imagine that there's some classes that that wouldn't be true for.
Well, it definitely does look different at secondary, and I can only speak to what it looks like at La Cuesta.
Right.
So, we're talking 11th and 12th graders. There, all of the teachers are using Notability, which is a program that allows students to basically take notes, interactive notes, capture work. They can submit it through NEO, and they're also all using NEO. So, they're using other sorts of apps that will get at whatever is applied to that specific course. But in general, I would say at La Cuesta, the iPads are used mostly within the classroom, and then to do credit recovery after school. That's where we're using it right now, because also, the nature of La Cuesta is there isn't a large amount of homework to do at home either.
Mm-hmm.
But they are being used in the classroom, and right now, I mean, the teachers have spent the last three years exploring what's going to work best. And I think Todd is completely 100% accurate when he talks about it comes down to the teacher, especially, it really is going to, the students are using it, but it's under still the direction of the teacher, at least at La Cuesta. When given like, hey, I want you to do this research assignment, they do those things. They go on and do research, and they create their own Prezi's and PowerPoints, and they'll, but it's still heavily teacher-directed.
And, you know, I visited a high school down south that has had a one-to-one iPad program for five years. It took a number of teachers. And I think that when we went into this, and I spoke about this a little bit at the last board meeting, the belief was that maybe we could replace a computer with an iPad, and it's clear that we can't. But what the iPad is very good at is a lot of the literacy work that we were doing. At this high school, all the textbooks were on iPad. The students even carry around backpacks. All of their notes were kept within their iPad. They literally just carried it around on iPad. And so, we're looking not to replace computers, but I believe replace the traditional hardback textbook. And so, that's the direction that we've learned through this process.
And just to jump on to that, that's the, that's the communication that we have had, Todd and I, is with the teachers at La Cuesta. And it actually has, it's given them more, they felt lighter about it. They felt like, if they know that it's more for, to replace a textbook or a novel, and students can use it as their notebook to keep their notes, it's not as daunting as to say, create this, this other thing, and they have to learn all these new apps, and these, just, so far, as a teacher, they've, you could see them feeling, I see they're just lighter about it. They feel much more comfortable with it.
It lowers their effective filter, and then what ends up happening is they start with that, but then they end up doing incredible other things. So, that's what we've seen.
Ms. Herron?
I would agree with Ms. Parker. This was a, I found a great summary of the program. But I guess my concern is still, I didn't realize we weren't continuing the program in third grade this year. The one-to-one is not being continued at the moment?
The plan was to, in third grade, provide iPads that would stay in the classroom rather than having students take them home, because we heard in the evaluation piece that I spoke about in the report, that teachers and parents thought the, that students in third grade were too young to carry the device back and forth. So, one of the things we talked about trying was just having them be, having classroom sets. Initially, we discussed in a meeting that 10 would be enough for classrooms, and then Amy called me panicked during the summer, and she goes, "I've totally rethought what I said. I think we need a class set." And by that time, the orders hadn't gone in, and then I brought the order back to the board. So, that's why we're behind. We're eventually going to have a class set for every third-grade class.
So, that explains the issue of last meeting, where of the thousand iPads, only 40 were for the iPad pilot?
Correct.
So, see, that was not in my mind clear at all. I didn't, I couldn't understand why only 40, if you've got third graders who need them. So, I wasn't aware that, did third graders originally take them home?
They did.
And so, that program, after the first year, stopped?
No, they took them home up until this would be the first year that they didn't, based on the survey we did of parents and teachers. That's what we heard back, and that's how we were trying to adjust the program to meet those requests.
And so, if we continued the program, and this document doesn't talk about how we go about continuing it, to spread it, originally, there was a laid-out plan of the schools that would get it after the first year, the schools would get it the second year. Has that plan all gone by the wayside?
My goal with this was just to update you on where we're at, not to make a recommendation at this point in time. My understanding from the board was that you just wanted an update about where we were, not necessarily a recommendation for moving forward. I think that I have to work with Mr. Matsuka on how we do move forward, what that will look like, and how that's tied to instructional materials.
Yeah. I guess that's the missing ingredient, because, you know, my concern was, has this program just stopped? And...
No, in fact, the fact that we don't have those iPads have become a big issue for teachers. And we had actually talked about, when Mr. Matsuka... teachers, and we had actually talked about, when Mr. Matzouk first arrived, we were talking about doing an instructional pilot, materials pilot, and he said, "Well, maybe we'll hold back the iPad since it was just a pilot and use them for the instructional materials pilot." And I was like, "I don't think that's gonna be a good idea." And I think I mentioned that to the principals at the one-to-one, and they were like, "We can't go without those." And so we pushed them out this year and just continued like we had been doing.
And so by us not taking action two weeks ago, you stopped the purchase of the 40 iPads you need for this program?
What I'm gonna do is, I have already looked at, so the board approved the pilot. I came to you with, and we've been buying additional devices as needed to support the pilot, since we've been in this, what it feels like an ongoing pilot forever. I talked to Mr. Matzouk, and I was so concerned about the 40, I thought, "I think I can order them under the board's original vote to support the pilot and in the LCAP," so that's what we're doing this week, we're gonna order those 40, but we're holding off on all the other ones.
Yeah, there was no intent to stop the program. You know, I don't think there was any intent to stop it. I think my concern was what's happening to it.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause there'd been no, we don't know what's happening to it.
Right.
You've told me stuff tonight that I hadn't heard before.
Yes, I understand.
Yeah, so, you know, if it's gonna go forward, then we need a plan of how it's gonna go forward, who's gonna pay for it, where the money's gonna come from, are we still gonna have the investment for learning? And it appeared that that's worked out. You talk about the funds that we've received, but do we still have any backlog problem of people who didn't pay?
Very, very little. It's really worked itself out. The other thing that'll let the board know is that the cost of iPads have come down a lot since we started this three years ago. We were buying the iPad for $480 plus the $100 Apple Care Plus, and now the cost for the iPad is $314. So if we, right now, the payment is $19.67 a month, if we were to expand this program on the current cost, the, and parents wanted to participate, it's $12.66 a month.
Are we close to the three-year period where the parents own that computer?
Really close. In April-
Hopefully those payments will stop then.
Correct.
Okay. Listen.
Thank you. So I just need a little bit of clarification. When you were giving the information about "we," I actually wasn't sure who "we" was. Are you talking about "we" as in Adams School, or "we" in your dissertation, all pilot schools, all four?
All three elementary pilot schools.
All three elementary, okay, so that's who you were talking about. And can you break down what student growth and achievement and goals looks like in the most basic way? Because if we're not gonna be talking about the CAS scores, what does that look like? So when you say we've met all of our goals, we've seen growth, what does that translate to?
So the best model is to, as your research is, you need to assess your students, formative, give them a formative assessment, reading every three to six weeks. And so I'll use the model at Adams. So we assess every four weeks with a STAR reading assessment. So we assess the first week of school, and then this week we're assessing, this is our second period. So that gives the students, they're able to see their growth, that gives teachers an opportunity to plan for instruction, but most importantly, formative assessments are used to motivate student learning, right, along their trajectory. So in the meantime, there's goals that students have to meet school-wide, monthly, that go along with accelerated reader program. And with those goals, all students know that they need to read independently for a minimum of 30 minutes a night, and can also be incorporated into the classroom. They have to score 85% or higher on their comprehension quizzes, average score, and they have to be reading within their zone of proximal development. So I also saw in my research that there was a teacher that was using their formative assessments, but the students were not reading within their ZPD, they were reading much lower, and therefore the students did not make growth as well. So I was able to then, because it was a teacher of mine, I was able to, it was a fairly new teacher, I was able to talk with her and say, "Let's pay attention to the zone of proximal development." It was early on in the year, too, and then she was able to make corrections. So it's so super important to pay attention to those three, three things. So again, it's 85% comprehension, it's 30 minutes of reading every night, and within the ZPD. So Renaissance Learning has met, they do all the calculations for you. They print out a weekly diagnostic assessment that lets us, me know where my students are. Even our after-school students are in A, that are in AOK are broken up into groups, too, so those after-school leaders can monitor students as well. So every time a student takes a reading comprehension, they get immediate feedback from the iPad so they can see how they did. I just read with my son after school today, and he's a third grader that struggles in reading, but he knows he used to come to my office every day, we read his book, he takes his comprehension quiz, and then he wants to see how many words he's read. So he's read 15,000 words so far this month, independent, so that's in addition to the guided reading that the teacher gives as well. So there's so much motivation that goes on within that, and that, the first month school period closes this Friday, and so therefore we're really monitoring, ensuring that 100% of our students make their goals every single month, and saying, "What can I do to support you?" Dr. Ramirez was at Adams today, and I told him I have one student that I'm concerned about, who's met 75% of his goals, so therefore I can easily target those students to ensure that they're successful and that they make their goals. And then there's school-wide celebrations that happen monthly, and then there's school-wide celebrations that happen at the end of the year for students that have made, have read over a million words, 500,000 words, students have made growth, because it's all about you working within your zone of proximal development and you growing. So if you're a third grade student and you're reading a second grade level, that you've grown 1.5 years, that's excellent, so let's continue on that trajectory. So those are the goals that I'm talking about, and those goals are in our handbook, they're in our website as well. Students are aware of their goals, parents are aware of the goals. There's a Home Connect portion that's a part of Renaissance Learning, too, so that you as a parent, when your child takes a comprehension assessment, you get an email sent to you saying the title of the book and how they scored as well. So it's fairly comprehensive, that one of my goals as an instructional leader is not just at Adams, but is also helping my colleagues in this area as well, and growing, and how we can all move forward. So Adams, you know, we grew 10% on our summative assessment in English Language Arts. We went from 44% of our students meeting exceeding standard to 54%. With our highest students are third grade students, so 65% of our students met or exceeded the standards in English Language Arts, and actually 67% in math. So we are really seeing trends along that line, but we are really committed to using our data monthly and weekly and using our goal setting, but technology is a huge piece of it. So I, it's not just one, it's not just the formative assessment, it's not just the reading program, it's not just the iPad, they all come together to really build a successful program.
Thank you. So let me just quickly, so this is, the, this also, the other pilot schools are doing identical things as you are?
They are. I will say we are farther ahead in, we've, than where they're, they are at, but they're really close behind where we're at, and not, we're not leading, I would say they're close behind us in that area. So therefore, when I was able to look at my data, I was able to know, I was able to see definite trends.
All right, and can you-
Without giving out.
Yeah, and I don't know if you can speak briefly on some of our underrepresented groups, including special ed students, English learners, and low-income students. Are we seeing similar trends, maybe not at the same growth level, but similar?
Most definitely. I mean, I think one of the powers in technology is giving students access, and so therefore, even, I'll just give an example in writing, you know, we just heard from Sheri how, how technology, the speech-to-text piece is so essential for those students that just struggle with getting the words on paper, that really have so much up here. And so that is an essential piece for writing, and we're just seeing, you know, we're committed to the Lucy U. Cockens Writing Program, and when I was at the Writing Institute in New York, I mean, the access piece, and they were just stressed the importance of using technology to ensure all students have access. And so I think that's one area where we're continuing to build and grow, but, yeah.
Okay. So I guess generally speaking for me, you know, one of the things that I'm looking for is, if we're not looking at test scores, like what are we looking at, just so we know? And how do we know that schools are making gains? I've heard that there's actually, I mean, based on this conversation, four things we're looking at. We're looking at the teacher instruction, the technology, the program, the intervention design itself, and then the take-home ability. And so what that raises for me is, if those are the four things, if I'm looking at funding, I wanna know how to allocate it all, because putting in a lot of money in just technology itself isn't going to address the three others, which is the teacher instruction, the intervention itself, or whether, you know, families can take it home or not. And so I think that for me, from a budget standpoint, I want to know, how do we think broadly? And I think that that's what I was trying to get at, like where are we going with this? So if this is a big instructional initiative, how do we allocate appropriate funding? Because in none of what anyone has said, has it led it to, none of what anyone has said has led me to believe that just looking at one of these areas is enough to achieve the goals that you're trying to talk about, or that you're telling us about. And so I think that that, for me, will be important to think broadly. So, you know, is it a 200 grand investment annually, and where does it go? Is it more? What's the longer-term picture as far as doing-
So I, I'll let Mr. Matzouk speak also, but I, those were the goals for this pilot. And as we start to, and we started this three years ago, so things have changed in education quite a bit in those three years, especially around open educational resources and other curriculum materials. The other thing that I wanna make the board aware of is that there's two terms in ed tech, and that is blended learning and personalized learning. Right now, we're in, if you look at our pilot schools, it's really a blended learning model, where we're doing traditional, what has always been traditionally done in a classroom, and we're using technology to buttress a lot of that work. I think that we're moving to a place where we wanna get to personalized learning, a lot of what Mr. Matzouk was doing in Milpitas. And that's where students really control their own learning in a lot of ways, and so that's, that's the direction we're trying to go. So what the goals would be moving forward if we were to expand, or they may be completely different than, than what the goals of this specific pilot were.
Which is, I think, fine. I think I'd still like to know what that means. I mean, because going from a blended learning model is where we've invested resources, and if we're going to transition to a different model, I imagine that it's still going to mean we're gonna have to look at programs itself, the design, the teacher instruction, how do we provide professional development for our teachers? And so that's, I think, for me, the bigger picture of what I was talking about. What does this mean? Where is it going? You know, in the next, and it sounds like we really can't plan too far, 'cause technology's moving much faster than we are. But at least in the next two years or so, what does that look like for the district?
I will say with the professional learning for teachers, one model that's just been super effective is the co-teach model. So we started off with Wendy Mirabod when we, and she was teaching, coincided with the teacher, so it wasn't just one person with a vessel of knowledge, but there was kind of a gradual release. I just saw David Lovejoy, he came in and set up in our Montessori 4th through 6th grade classroom at Google Classroom. And he set it up with the students, he set it with the teacher, and I was able, I watched the whole process evolve, and it was really the similar, like what Wendy did, "Let me help you a gradual release, so I'm not just sending you there." He's also a teacher on the account, so if she gets stuck, he can help her as well. So that model, I think, is the most effective model, because a teacher doesn't feel like they're alone, and they feel like they have a coach that can help them, and then that person then goes in and helps another teacher. So I, that, from every model that I've seen, I can't stress enough how important is that co-teach model.
Ms. Allison.
So what was described by Mr. Rickman of the textbooks on the iPad, I'm hearing is quite different than, say, a personalized learning program. Is that, am I correct in that? That we're sort of comparing the iPads are the tool, but then all these other things can come into play?
Absolutely, and we're in a transition period, I would say.
And do you feel that the flexibility of the iPad is still there? Because I think also what's being mentioned is that it's not the best output ability on an iPad. It's more an input, correct?
So what we're, what we're seeing is that, yes, that's what you would be led to believe, but then there's just some incredible work being output with the device.
But as far as you said also, that you'd still need a computer. I mean, you still need like a keyboard with a laptop or-
Right, I think what we would do is to continue, continue the model that we've had, which is in, in our one-to-one schools, and actually at a lot of our schools, that Chromebooks are what they use when they're gonna sit down and type something out. But for a lot of the research and reading and movie-making and all of that other stuff, they, they use the iPad. It's form factor, the touchscreen, it just makes it ideal for going home and sitting in bed and reading, and it's-
So then are we gonna need two for every student, or what are you-
Well, what Dr., I believe Matzouk said at the board meeting where he was talking about the instructional materials pilot, is that we would get to a place where we had one-to-one, hopefully, devices that students took home, but then had enough Chromebooks and carts that any teacher that wanted to check out a cart at some point in time would have access to that. Also, I sure hope that teachers aren't using technology every minute, every day in their classes. That wouldn't be a model that I would, I would support.
I'd just like to comment or say, I'm, I'm in the same places Miss Lee Moon is in terms of trying to understand the bigger picture that we have, and it's not about iPads, it's not even about Chromebooks, I care less, you know? That's just, my dissertation was on teachers' use of technology in the classroom. And my dissertation also speaks about how film strips, overhead projectors, keep going down the list. Everything was a different thing, and the most innovative thing at its time. So I really don't care whether it's an iPad or Chromebook or a Surface tablet, 'cause that could replace both of those. For me, it's the bigger question of how we're integrating all these pieces that Miss Lee Moon was alluding to as well, is that we're looking at teacher training, we're looking at how students are using whatever technology it is in the classroom, how we're supporting teachers, how we integrate parents into this equation in supporting them in terms of providing a space for them to support their children, where it's no longer gonna be a book, you know, that they can pick up, that it's gonna be on their child's iPad. How do we do all those pieces as we move forward? And try to understand it in the big picture, and how do we then express it to all of those different groups? How do we talk to parents about it? How do we talk to teachers? And we still, I personally still find that we have a lot of teachers who are not in the same places that perhaps you are or any of the teachers you work with are. And that's across the district, and that's something we have to confront. As much as we hate talking about it, we can't. We have to meet people where they're at, we can't drag them along and expect them to be there, that's not gonna be the case. So I think it's the bigger picture that we have to address. And I think for me, what I heard from the board the last time we talked about this, when we were trying to find sort of a happy medium, is that we were discussing the purchase of iPads as far as substituting for curriculum, so to speak, or a means of transmitting curriculum. And then we were talking about iPads in terms of the one-to-one iPad pilot, which are somewhat overlapping at times, but somewhat distant. And I think for the board, that was trying to understand how those two pieces fit together, how they don't, where, where do these other pieces that we're talking about fit into that bigger vision? And I think it's the vision that we're trying to look for, the vision that I think as a board we're trying to understand, and therefore try to communicate to the community in a way that, that we could articulate and say to a group of parents, or say to them, "Here's how we see technology come into play in your home, here's how we see technology come into play when, in you visit your child's classroom, and when you're talking to your child's teacher." So I think that's the bigger piece that for me is, was missing in the conversation we had the last time, and I think is the piece that I think we are looking for as a board, if I can say that for the board, that, obviously tonight's discussion was on the one-to-one iPad, that's, there's no question about that, but I think then we jumped to- But I think then we jump to the bigger question, which you were alluding to as well, Mr. Rickman, in terms of that piece. And I think for a district, we're finding... We're trying to find that, that there's a void there. And that void needs to be filled with some level of understanding, so we're all on the same page as far as that's concerned.
It's going to take Carrie and I working together a little bit to talk about the direction that we're going to go in Cabinet. The other thing I would say, Dr. Paz, is that a lot of the teachers at our pilot schools were not ready to go when we launched this. So my question is a chicken-and-egg question. They're doing incredible things now, even the ones who were most reticent about moving forward. And it's because our teachers are incredible. I mean, our teachers are literally incredible. And you give them a tool with that power, they're going to do amazing things with it. And so I don't know the answer to the question of, do we meet people where they are, or do we just get going? I mean, that's something I struggle with all the time. If you read people like Alan November and people of that ilk, they will tell you that if you wait for everybody to be ready, you will wait forever. And so I think that we need to provide as much support as we can. And I think that we've done that at the pilot schools. And I would argue that the results have been tremendous.
And I would just add, in terms of that piece, though, that I'm not advocating to wait for all teachers to be on board. I'm advocating somewhere in the middle. We have to bring on those teachers who are not comfortable, at the same time supporting the teachers who are ahead. It's, you know, it's the same sort of model that we try to do with kids, in the classroom.
Absolutely.
And I think that's really important to do. But it's also clear that if we don't do anything, teachers are not going to come, you know? And move forward in the way that we expect them to do. So I think there's a little combination of both. And for the board, I think what we are hoping that in a future discussion, I'm not sure if we, as a number of us present, are going to be present for a conversation in the direction... Maybe future board members will be. But we're happy to come and visit, I'm sure. We may not be present, but I hope that we have some sort of feedback or a small report before at least four of us leave the board, and get a sense that maybe perhaps at the next meeting, or the following after that, of what you're all preliminarily thinking, you know? What could be that? You know, I envision, you know, a puzzle board up there, big pieces, maybe some smaller pieces in there, where we start looking at how these pieces fit together for our community, for the teachers that we work with.
Yeah, I wanted to thank the board for asking the questions. They're important questions. We have our strategic meeting coming up Tuesday. We have a lot to cover. I don't know if we'll get to this, but I promise we will try to get something to you before too long.
Thank you.
I just had a comment from two weeks ago. The issue two weeks ago was really simple, buying a thousand iPads and buying 500 and some Chromebooks, of which 40 were for one-to-one. And so the big issue out there was, what are the other 960 iPads for? What are the other Chromebooks for, other than to use in these pilot programs? The sixth pilot program. And there was no relationship between the need for a thousand iPads and Chromebooks to that pilot program. So that's very important to me, to find out what that relationship is, where those numbers came from, without having any pilots, to know right off the bat, you need a thousand Chromebooks, or a thousand iPads. There was just something missing in that conversation. If it had only been, do we need 40 iPads for the one-to-one? That would have been a one-minute discussion.
So I have so much to say on this topic. I've been taking notes. I'm going to offer five comments. I'll go quickly. It's clear to me that there needs to be a vision roadmap for the place of technology in instruction. I mean, how do we integrate those two, where it's technology and instruction? I've been listening in our Cabinet meetings. Todd and I have probably talked three times about this. I've listened to the board, both here and actually in our interview process. And here's what I will commit to, that either at the October 25th board meeting, or the November 15th slash 17th board meeting, that I'm going to do some writing on this topic about the vision of technology and instruction in a school district. I have lots of experience to share that will be relevant. And also I have to make that fit into the context of Santa Barbara. So we will... I will commit to getting that to you, because I think, for those of you that have been part of the board for four, six, eight years, you know, I want you to hear that. There was a picture tonight, and I'm going to push back a little bit, and it's about the role of the teacher. And I understand that, because I was teacher for so long. But the idea that the technology will be sort of managed and controlled by the teacher, and until we get the teacher to understand how to manage that with kids, that we're going to slow the process down. That's actually a bad assumption. And here's why. What technology has the power to do is engage kids and own their learning in ways that we have dreamt about for decades. And the technology... Everybody in this room has a smartphone. The things that you can do with your smartphone as a consumer, as a citizen, are just light years compared to five years ago. And we have yet to tap into that. Kids can own their learning, we just need to give them the space to do that. And one of the... There's many shifts that go on, and I wrote down four of them. I'm just going to comment on the one. Shifting the control of learning from the teacher to the student is a huge process. Trust me, as a teacher, I would give that up kicking and screaming. But when teachers see what students now do, without the teacher literally micromanaging 32 kids, it's incredible. And that's part of the vision of what can be. The board needs a roadmap. You need a roadmap about a one- to two-year vision. You need a roadmap around budget. Actually, we need a roadmap around budgets, so we know how we're going to cover in finances, you know, with all of our budget challenges. That's really important for a board, so that when you receive these requests for equipment, that you understand the context. You know, when this hits you, like, at a board meeting, you go, well, how does this fit? You know, if you don't have the vision of the future, how do you vote? And so that's something that we'll build... We can build it for this year, but we really need to build it out for future years and future boards. I'll comment about the question of training of teachers. I actually changed the word around there. It's how do we help teachers and principals be designers? How do we help them design different instructional models? The training is... It's important, but it's not the most crucial issue. It's how do you help teachers rethink their classroom and rethink their school? That's where, you know, some of my, I guess, most joyful moments in my last district happened when I saw teachers become designers, and they built their models, and they saw it working over time. To a person, those teachers would not go back to a 20th-century model. So there's so many shifts that have to happen. So I will commit to writing this, and we'll co-construct it with Todd and Cabinet, and we'll get you something before a lot of you depart, because you should have that. And you should know the vision of the district moving forward as you become a citizen and come to board meetings and cheer us on.
I want to thank Amy and Elise for being here at the board meeting rather than home with your families, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Board, we move to item number two, which is first reading of the district's initial proposal for 2016-17 collective bargaining with California School Employees Association, and it's chapter number 37.
Just a quick question, is F1 coming...
We switched one and four. So the one-to-one iPad was one. The original number one is four now. That's what... We just switched those two items.
Yeah, but that's not what you read.
No, that's what I said. Yeah.
Yeah.
So moving to item two.
And Mr. Torino will provide background.
So the Educational Employment Relations Act requires school employers to sunshine collective bargaining proposals before entering negotiations and collective bargaining. We are proposing, this is something we typically propose, both Article 9 and 40, wages, health and welfare benefits in the bargaining with the CSEA, Chapter 7. And we want the board to review what our proposals are and provide some direction to us as we move forward.
I had a question earlier. I'm not sure I want to ask it here, but what's encompassing the term Article 9 wages?
That that will be part of the discussion during negotiations.
What part of wages do we want to talk about?
What part of wages are we going to discuss at negotiations?
Yeah. Why are we opening it?
It's our typical sunshine articles that will be brought forward. It's kind of our yearly thing that we do.
We're bringing forward Article 9 and Article 40.
Okay.
It's tradition.
I think if we did not discuss wages, there would be an issue with our union, our CSEA.
I don't care.
Says the man is going off the board.
The other issue that I brought up a year ago, and it has to do with bargaining, and now the heat, you know, and I guess we missed the window again. At one point, there was discussion about looking at the calendar, to change the calendar because of heat. But now that wouldn't have done us any good this year. But is there any discussion on calendar as far as school year?
We could bring that up as another issue, if you'd like.
Is the calendar...
I was going to just say, this is CSEA, though, so just be aware that we're looking at CSEA, not SPTA.
But we still have calendar with them, too. Okay, I understand.
Any further questions?
Anything else? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
We move to item number three, first reading of Board Policy 5113.1, chronic absence intruency. Mr. Matsuhoka.
One of the really important data points that predicts students' long-term trajectory in school, I mean, this is, we're talking K1, 2 data, all the way up to high school. There's just so much important information that you can glean about the success, current and future of our students. And so here's policy about attendance. And Ms. Wagenek is here to provide an overview and respond to questions.
Good evening, Dr. Paz, board. Mr. Matsuhoka gave a good lead-in to the background on this new policy. We... This is a policy updated to reflect the inclusion of chronic absenteeism as a measure of student engagement. And I do want to also state that it was recently adopted in the last two weeks as a measure of student success at the state level. And so the state is increasingly emphasizing the importance of looking at student absence rates and making an action plan to actually address that absenteeism. So I bring to you the first draft of our updated board policy. Any questions?
Ms. Parker.
I just wanted to see, is this mostly reflected from California School Words Association update?
Yes. I didn't see that there was any... Anything in here that we would add. And it's in line with the practices that we've undertaken.
Great.
Mr. Eric.
Has it been determined that tardiness is no longer a major issue? Or I noticed you deleted it from the document.
We're not looking at tardies, per se. This is really looking at absences specifically, yes.
But tardiness doesn't have anything to do with...
No, it doesn't mean that it's not important. Tardiness is important, but it's not what we measure when we look, unless it's a tardy truant, which is 30 minutes or more, and then that's counted as an absence.
Okay.
I was going to comment that one of the things that, you know, obviously absenteeism is a big measure of whether a student's going to succeed or not, and that it's a huge, huge factor. But then there are other factors as well. When you start looking at whether a student's actually going to graduate by the time they hit 12th grade. More of a comment than a question is, how do we look at this in that realm of looking at all the other factors? And one of the things I mentioned before is, does this district really have any intentions of looking at sort of an early warning indicator or index for students? Or it starts looking at one of those things that they're not hitting, that we know eventually it will get to that point in time where they will not graduate, because they won't be there? Not necessarily because they, you know, they just are not going to be present. They're not... They're going to drop out. And so it's more of a comment, again, than a question. But it's something to consider, I think, as a district, because it's something that we need to address. And one of the things that I think all of the board members quickly realize, especially when we're looking at students' suspensions and expulsions, or expulsions in particular, is that this is not a new story for a lot of the students. This is something that happened to them a long time ago, and it's built up over time. So they get to the point in time where we're being asked to expel a student. So that's a big question for me.
If I could, and thank you. I completely agree. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity this fall to give the annual Student Services Report to you, so that we present to you the changes that we've made in the past year. Moving away from focusing on our older truants, and really looking at absences as a whole, putting A2A into place, and again, that shift into elementary school. Because you can, as you said, predict with alarming accuracy the students who will, quote, "drop out" or "not complete 12th grade on time," and you can do that early on in life. So we'll be doing that when the Student Services Report comes out. But I think, to your point about the expulsions, one thing that we've done in the past year also is to have elementary school principals, junior high school principals, and high school principals, and APs all serve on those expulsion panels, to see the history of a student. Because that expulsion, that moment of the expulsion started, for most of them, like you said, much earlier. And we're all in this together. This really is a unified school district, and the issues kind of play out over a long period of time for most of those students.
And I appreciate that, because, you know, coming off the last discussion we just had with the one-to-one iPad, and I think a couple people mentioned looking at individualized instruction. It's almost in this realm that we have to look at. I always look at the work that we're doing in schools, is going farther and farther down the path of looking at, almost having an IEP for each individual child that we have in the school, in some ways, in many ways. And looking at how we achieve that, so that we can gather as much information for that particular student, to stop them from getting to that point in time where they're going to drop out, or helping them so they continue in the path that they're going. And so I'm happy to hear that you guys are looking at that and trying to find other ways to begin to look at stopping that from happening. It's like the train's going down the path, we know it's happening, and yet we can't stop it sometimes, yeah. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
We will move on to item number four now, Family Engagement Services Proposal.
You have any open comments? So just turn it over to Michael. Okay. We welcome Dr. Mora to the microphone. She'll provide the report and respond to questions.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Paz, members of the board, Mr. Matsuhoka, cabinet, and guests. This past summer, Dr. Guillermo Juan and I presented our parent engagement programs evaluation to the board and to our community. This report focused on the alignment of our external partners' curriculums to our framework for family engagement. And as a part of this report, I shared with all of you our intent to create a structure by which an equitable base of parent workshops would be a reality for our families. This evening, I will share with you our Family Engagement Services Proposal. As shared previously, we define... As shared previously, we defined family engagement as the pursuit of an integrated strategy to support the exchange of information, purposeful interaction, and meaningful participation among schools, families, and community partners to support learning and achievement. Within our Framework for Family Engagement, we have attempted to define an integrated strategy as activities and actions offered by the district office, the school sites, and/or external partnerships that align to the learning objectives for parents. As a community, we understand that family engagement is not solely achieved through one activity or one action. The integrated strategy needs to be and support the exchange of information. Examples of such exchanges include the review of programs designed to serve the needs of English learners, the reclassification process and criteria, our A through G coursework, the process for enrolling students in our various academies, and the ELA/ELD pathway, as well as the process by which services are offered to students with disabilities. This exchange of information has to be purposeful. We have to have clear intention, and needs to inspire trust from our families. This purposeful interaction will strengthen our partnerships between the school and the family in support of their children's success. Finally, we aspire for meaningful participation among all our stakeholders. This participation does not look the same for all of our families. We have to create a culture that allows families to engage in various ways, from volunteering in the classroom, to organizing a school event, to being an active member of our PTA, of our ELAC, of our school site council, or of our foundations. We also need to be open to allowing parents to possibly take projects home, because they feel that that's a way that they can support. Meaningful participation looks different for every family at different times in their lives, and we need to allow for them to engage in a way that they feel most comfortable, while at the same time, providing them the opportunities to stretch and grow as equal partners. Within our framework, we identified six parent learning objectives that support student learning and achievement. These include family literacy, early childhood and adolescent development, we have accessing and navigating community and educational systems, shared leadership, meaningful homeschool partnerships, and college and career readiness. We also have identified specific learning objectives that can be met through the integration of activities and actions that range from district, site-based activities and actions, and our external partnerships. Today, we will focus how, as we as a district, can provide an equitable base of parent workshops that align to our framework. So the proposal before you outlines the development of a family engagement unit with very clear outcomes. The first being developing strong lasting relationships with families that center on trust and partnership in support of their children. The second is providing parent education programming to SBUSD families that directly align to the parent objectives described in our framework. And lastly, developing and establishing a base-level programming that the district office will provide to all of the schools. So our family engagement unit will focus on providing three distinct workshop offerings that align to our specific objectives within our framework. The Parent-School Partnership MALDEF is a curriculum that aligns with four of our objectives. The Latino Family Literacy Project is a curriculum that focuses on three of our objectives, and really supports families in developing strategies to support their children's literacy at home. And lastly, the third curriculum offering has not been determined at this time, but two plausible programs will be explored, and these include Parenting Partners and Parent Project. And this curriculum focuses on two of the objectives, the primary one really looking at early childhood and adolescent development, which is not addressed in the other two programs. So although the long-term goal will be to implement three distinct workshops, I am proposing that we begin with an initial two-year plan that will allow us to build our team and implement two curriculums that focus on five of the six objectives. This year, we will work on hiring a full-time bilingual engagement liaison two that will coordinate and facilitate the Parent-School Partnership curriculum for our schools. The following year, in twenty seventeen eighteen, we will build our team by hiring a full-time bilingual family liaison one that will facilitate the Latino Family Literacy Project curriculum. During the third year, twenty eighteen nineteen, we will reflect our implementation model, and really look at fine-tuning our practices based on parent feedback that we will be collecting from year to year. This will allow us to evaluate our work and determine the next steps as they relate to our capacity to deliver a third curriculum. For this academic school year, we have to think about our costs in order to provide a base-level program to all of our families, and this is the following. For the twenty sixteen school year, district costs would be eighty-two thousand dollars, and the source would be from the LCAP. The site costs would be nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, and they would be allocating these through their site budgets. And the program offered would be the Parent-School Partnership MALDEF curriculum, which is a twelve-week curriculum at each of the school sites. For the twenty seventeen eighteen?
Can I ask a question on that? Go ahead. How do we determine the MALDEF curriculum? I know we use it at at one school, but maybe more.
No, yes, the MALDEF curriculum has been a curriculum that we've been using as a district, and it initially was used with the Westside Project and the UCSB partnership between McKinley and Harding, and it was delivered by teachers and parents at those particular schools. We've also piloted that same curriculum at one of our school sites, at Cleveland Elementary, that's something that we're using currently as well. And our external partners also use this curriculum in a modified way in order to deliver training to parents.
And we think it's successful, and we're happy with it?
Yes, we do. May I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So for this, for the sixteen seventeen, we've reviewed this. So I wanted to move on to the seventeen eighteen school year. So within this particular year, we see an increase in costs, because we are offering a second curriculum, and we are also looking at hiring a second individual who will facilitate with this programming. So the district costs would be a hundred and thirty-five thousand, the source would be our LCAP. Site costs would be three thousand, about three thousand dollars, and they would allocate these funds through the site budgets. And as mentioned, the programming offered will be the PSP, the MALDEF curriculum, and that will continue to be a twelve-week session. And then we will begin also with the Latino Family Literacy Project, and that's a ten-week curriculum that we are also currently using at our sites. And then for the third year, you'll see that costs will roughly stay the same, you might see a slight decrease, and that's just associated with the one-time costs. So at the site, you see a reduction in the cost as well, and we will continue offering the same two programs. What the difference is between this particular year is that we'll actually delve into a deeper reflection of how our implementation took place within these two years, and how we can fine-tune our practice in order to ensure efficiency in the use of our resources. What we will also do during this third year is reflect on what third curriculum will we be looking and exploring. As I mentioned previously, we are considering Parenting Partners and Parent Project, which are two curriculums that are available that allow us to really support the early childhood and adolescent development learning objective that has been identified per parents, and that we have not addressed with these two previously mentioned curriculums. So then lastly, I really think that it's important that we identify that through our work, we have found that our families have identified these types of learning opportunities, such as the ones that we intend to offer, as having a really positive impact on their interactions with their children, especially as they relate to the education of their child. And they have seen children respond in a different way to their own learning, and to them engaging with their children around education. So engaging our families requires our collective efforts, and it is our intention that the family engagement unit will strengthen these efforts by providing more direct support to school communities that focus on continuing to foster strong relationships with families that center on trust, and that strongly develop the partnership in order to support their children. That we really focus on building our internal capacity to deliver parent education programming to all SBUSD families that directly align to our framework. And lastly, really developing a base-level programming that will be provided by central office to all school sites, so that all of our schools have equitable access to this programming and can engage in these types of activities at their school site with our district support. So now I open it up to any questions.
Ms. Parker.
Thank you, and you addressed a number that I had running through my head, so I appreciate that. Obviously, I'm certainly very familiar with Parent Project, and I also know that it's not a good fit for some sites, and so those sites that aren't using it, what are their parents getting? And so I appreciate that they could be a partner, but I also appreciate that the district would have some responsibility at all school sites. A question that's bubbling for me is this go down to the preschool level, because there's so much need. Before, those students actually, I mean, they may, and I'm not talking just about our state preschools, but possibly our community partners as well, if we know that they're within our attendance areas. So that's just a question mark for me whenever this comes back for a vote. Another question mark for me is what they, you're talking about the two district positions, there is a school site level position that's mentioned. I don't know if that's something that you're thinking of for the future, it doesn't seem to be in your short-term plan, so I would love to hear what you're thinking about that.
So for the first one regarding the preschool, I think it's, for us, it's really engaging in conversation in relationship to what it looks like for pre-K through twelve, and what support we can provide, and working really closely with our early education department in order to make that a reality, right? Because it's going to look different for our preschool-age children. So there'll need to be a really close collaboration with Michelle Robertson, so that we are able to provide and support our families within that particular age group. Now, in relationship to the job descriptions, yes, there has been a job family that was designed and developed in order to provide school sites the opportunity in the future, if they wanted to pursue and allocate site funds to have a liaison at their school site, that they would be able to do so, because currently, we don't have anything available to them to explore. And these have been conversations that, you know, have come up informally about, is that a possibility at sites? What would that look like? And if, in the future, they look to moving in that direction, then we will have something available for them to consider.
If that were to come forward, I would have some suggestions around a little bit of wording in that particular job description, just in the sense that some of the activities that go on now that are listed in there are really taken on by PTAs and PTOs. And so I think that maybe a word or two about parent organizations, like working with parent, and even community organizations, because sometimes it's an outside community organization that comes into a school site and does that. And so I think that that might be something that I could give some feedback on, and maybe others as well. I'm sure everybody else is also going to be thinking about it in the context of the overall budget.
So I would appreciate that feedback, that way I can go ahead and make whatever adjustments need to be made for the future.
Thank you. I just need a little bit of clarity, what's the role of community partners in this? Or is there none?
In this particular presentation and proposal, there is not a direct link within our external partners. Our external partners can continue to work with our sites, this will be provided, this will only provide a base-level parent engagement for our school sites. They can still continue to partner with the organizations that they have partnered with historically, in order to augment the base-level programming that we offer.
So is it required for school sites to pay for, like, what if a school site doesn't want PSP?
Then the school would just let me know.
Okay, and so they wouldn't pay into it if they don't want it?
No, 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 nothing.
So this is basically optional for school sites, but it's not required for any school site to buy into the family literacy program or PSP?
Well, those are a part of our framework. When we developed the framework, we identified specific programs that would be aligned to the parent objectives that we have identified. So if school sites are partnering with particular external organizations or vendors, we need to make sure that whatever programming they are offering or choosing to use directly aligns to our framework. And currently, part of the evaluation that we did last year was to see, our external partners' curriculum, does it align to our framework? We identified that they did, which is a great thing. So they can continue to partner with them, but they know that we are also available to provide a base, and they can augment and continue to partner with whatever organization is aligned to our vision and our Framework for Family Engagement.
So there have been some external partners that have provided the PSP program, and so is that going to change? I mean, and I don't know, I don't know what the cost is, I don't know if those external partners actually provide it for a more expensive cost, or if it's actually less expensive. I'm actually trained in PSP, and so I taught it myself here in this district for years, and so I know the program and the model very well. But I also know how important with parent outreach, FIS is, and so I guess that's why I ask, like, just because I'm also of the mind that, especially for programs that, once parents go through programs, their desire to go through that exact same program really differs year after year. And so I'm trying to figure out how we don't lose the engagement part, because if someone's been trained in some of these programs, like, are they gonna have other options? And I'm hearing that if the school site is able to afford them, they will have other options. If the school site is not able to afford them, those options may not exist, is that correct?
That's correct. The options that they will have are what we are able to offer from the district stance.
And so it sounds like we're only talking about two or three programs in the long term, but if we identify that two or three programs really isn't enough, will there be the opportunity for these positions to then offer something else? I just think that you can only do PSP so long.
No, I agree, I think, I'm sorry to interrupt, but yes, I think, I think for us, this is the immediate vision, however, right? As we build out, and as we reflect after our initial implementation, the, what parents, what parent feedback we receive will allow us to tailor particular workshops and sessions that are more specific to their needs. We know that PSP, that parents enjoy it, appreciate it, and have actually opted to take it multiple times, because what I've heard is that they don't get everything the first time around, right? And that they want to go back and receive that curriculum a second time, because that second time, now they have the background knowledge, and they've actually applied some of the strategies that were shared, and they can go back with a different lens. But I agree with you, I think we can, that there should be other offerings, but I think we need to start with these two programs and then build out based on the feedback that we receive from families. And the intention is that during year three, we actually begin to look at, how is this working? Are there other steps that we need to take? Does that mean we go into a third curriculum? Or does that mean that we look at a workshop that parents have shared with us at multiple sites, that this is an area of need? Right? So it really gives us, this plan really gives us the opportunity to take our vision where it will go, right? Where our parents are asking for.
Well, good, I am glad to hear that, one, the role of community partners is not gone, because I think that that's, there's still some interest in our community for that. But two, I mean, people may take PSP two or three times, but if we have people here twelve years, I'm just, I want to make sure that the scope of these positions, particularly the district position that's being requested for consideration, isn't just limited to that, because I feel like there may be other needs in the future for other types of programming.
I agree. And just to reiterate, you know, when we think about our framework, and we talk about how we define family engagement, it's multiple stakeholders, right? We're not just looking at district, we're looking at site activities and also our external partnerships. So we have to take all of those three areas into consideration and really develop them if we truly want to be able to reach our vision of what family engagement can be. Thank you.
I only have one comment is in that when you do look at, you know, other programs across the county, there are a number of different programs that are both, you know, directed to early childhood and adolescent development, or early childhood education, that work towards engaging parents, that are evidence-based. So I invite you to work with those different community partners that are doing it, and other school districts as well that are doing it, Guadalupe, Santeria. Guadalupe, Santeria, they have experience in that. So it gives you other options. That's all I'm suggesting. And if you need to follow up with anyone, you're welcome to follow up with me.
Thank you.
In my own other hat that I wear for First Five. And I will connect you with the right people in terms of that, at least in that realm. And Michelle could probably do it as well.
Thank you, Dr. Poss. I look forward to being able to further engage in this conversation.
Thank you.
How many families are typically in one of these 10-week programs or 12-week programs?
20 parents. It can reach from 20 to 25 parents.
At a school?
Mm-hmm.
And that's once a year at a school?
At this point, it would be once a year, but really, we can offer it multiple times a year. But again, we want to start with once a year to figure out how is it working? How, what does it look like logistically? But we have an opportunity to offer it multiple times a year, in the morning or in the evening. And that is really, that's a wonderful opportunity for our families because we have families that prefer morning, some prefer midday, and that can also be an option for us. And then we have those that prefer in the evening.
Can they, can somebody at McKinley go to one at Harding? I mean, can you, because they're purely pro-school.
You know, we've actually had schools partner together so that families are able to have access. And those have been conversations that I've had even last year when we, when I engaged with our principals and our site leadership teams around family engagement, the opportunity to really let our families know that it's open for everyone, right? But keeping in mind that there are certain procedures or ways of doing things at one school site that might not be the same exact way they present information or do things at another school site. So being aware of that. There are common practices that we have district-wide, but there's also nuances between school communities, right, that we have to take into account and be sensitive to.
In your term, family engagement unit, the program being offered is mainly aimed at Latino, Hispanic? Is that, I mean, is that the, is that what this is aimed at, giving family engagement in the Latino community?
We are looking to increase our family engagement with our Latino families. And these trainings can be offered in English as well. So then that opens up the door to engaging all of our families within these particular programs.
And will that be part of this process?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. Any other questions? No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to our final item, Facility Bond Program Report. Mr. Matuoka.
I wrote a, actually a very long narrative because it's a complex topic. And the audience is really our future board. I wrote this up with them in mind. And the reason why I spent so much time writing, describing it is, those of you who've been on this board for any length of time, you know, when you have these facility contracts coming before you, they are big dollar amounts. And I would say that our community expectations of how we spend those tax dollars are just really high, and they should be. I mean, the ballot measure combined is $193 million. And we have, we have a huge responsibility to spend that money right, well, at the right pace. And so I did think of our future board members when I wrote this, but also for you, an update. And then there are some questions at the end that I would love to hear from the current board, even though most of you won't be part of managing the future, but you've had experience now with seeing a bond program, anywhere from, let's see, 2010 was the last set of bonds, right? There was a gap. I actually gone back and looked at the history of bonds that were passed in Santa Barbara Unified Elementary and Secondary. So not to read through the narrative, but the narrative is to, it really gives you the detailed background. The slide deck is just going to give us a guide, a framework to have the conversation. Feel free to ask a question at any point in time. And at the end of the narrative, there were some questions that I wanted to run by the board and just to get your feedback about how we proceed. So I'm going to have Brian just, oh, you gave me the clicker. One other thing that's been really important for me as a superintendent running a bond program is to make sure that instructional outcomes are kept front and center. And sometimes we can get lost in the details of designing buildings and just focus on the brick and mortar that we fail to integrate what we should be thinking about with teaching and learning. And I've been really pushing hard on this question that just because the school of the 20th century was designed around the classroom as the fundamental construct, that doesn't need to be the assumption in the 21st century. And you're seeing school districts and models where they're, they're not just building the 1,000 square foot classroom, they're building learning community spaces, they're building flexible spaces. And we just, we had a lot of success with that in Nolpitas with old buildings. And we took 50-year-old buildings and just looked at where could we take out walls and create shared space. With new construction, you get to have a lot of fun with that because you get to dream about the future. We also have a responsibility to get the most from our taxpayer dollars. It's a huge responsibility. And the timing of this is important. Inflation is always present. It's been very low, although I'm not sure about the Santa Barbara construction scene. It's probably still there. But every year, we're going to build in an inflation factor. I typically used a 4% number. I checked with staff, it seemed like 4% to 5% was what it's been running the last four years. So here's what happens if you wait two years, you've lost 8% of your resources. And if you don't move fast enough, you have to move fast, you don't want to move too fast that you can't manage it all. But speed is of the essence. The cost of construction by 2020 could be 16% higher. And then this last statement is, it's, I don't know, it's a leadership statement, it's a philosophical statement. I just really believe strongly that the district stays in the primary role of owner of all projects and outcomes. And that's a, that's a big statement. It's a subtle statement. I've seen districts where, you know, that ownership and driving the program is turned over to program management firms or to principals or to somebody. And it's, it's a big process. And I'm just a firm believer that the district superintendent, team, and board should be the primary drivers of this. But we're not a construction company and we have to be careful that we don't overcommit ourselves and, you know, get ourselves spending all my time and our time just running construction. So just by way of background, I'm sure you're familiar with our architects and you have an adopted pool. Thank you for doing that work because that is work. We have six architects ready to go. So construction management firms and program management firms, there can be a lot of overlap, they can almost be synonymous, or you can differentiate those. And you can have both. I mean, if you were running like a, I don't know, a billion-dollar bond program, you would need both. We're the size district. I'm comfortable that we can manage it as the owner. You know, I've talked, I've watched colleagues, superintendents in districts of 30,000 kids and a half-billion-dollar bond program. That's probably not something that a district team can manage. But we're the right size, we could do that. So construction management firms, they're the interface between us as the contract owners and the contractors who build it. We don't, I mean, Dave Head Young's one guy. And when you start driving eight projects simultaneously, you just can't be at enough meetings. So you really bring in companies that are experts in making sure you're on schedule, budget, paperwork, just tracking everything. The program management firms, these are the companies that would run an entire bond program. They set up your global budget, your schedule, your multi-year plans, phase one, two, three, four. I've worked, I've worked around those kinds of firms. I've seen that in a district I worked in, I've seen it in a community college district nearby. I know, I'm pretty sure that that's how Telacoo, I think they were a hybrid of program management and CM. And they were providing both services. That's my sense. I'm just pausing here, not getting any reaction. So I think that's accurate. Now, just a ballpark, and these are really ballpark, but it's helpful for board members to understand that the full cost of a project is divided into hard and to soft. What we pay to the contractor who builds it, it's about 75% of the project. And the 25% of soft costs, it's part of doing business in school districts and public agencies. You have to pay for an architect. We need their skill. And we need a CM to drive the project. And then there's other costs like the building inspector and fees and DSA. Ballpark, I like to go with 25%. You know, this, you know, if we can get it lower, that frees up more money for other projects. You can go a little higher, depends on the type of project. If it was a complex one, like I could imagine modernization of Marjorie Luke, that's a complicated project. So fees might have been higher. So here's three different management structures. I outlined them in detail. Option one is where you use a program management firm to oversee the entire program and/or provide CM services. I've seen models where you have a program management firm and then you have construction management firms as a second layer. Option two, and that's the one that we're recommending, is that the district manage the program with support from CMs for large projects or when the volume gets fast. And the third, you could try to manage all of this in-house. And I said in the narrative, I wouldn't recommend that because we're primarily a teaching and learning institution. We're not a, we're not a building company. If we did that, we would have to have a whole division that's just devoted to construction. And I don't think that's the right program design because it ultimately goes through the superintendent and cabinet and one school board. And then pretty soon, I'm not thinking about teaching and learning, I'm thinking about managing too much construction. So here's a team that we're thinking of, so it's four individuals. If we go with option two, and this was a structure that the district had in the past, there would be additional program managers that would be district employees. You know, how many we need depends on how much we choose to own. It could be, we could add one more person and maybe we can run the whole program. If we start running a lot of work, then we might need two. And here's where you get some efficiency. You know, if a project's pretty small, we might not need a CM firm. Like if it's, you know, putting, well, we're not putting portables anymore. But if you have a project that's a million dollars or less, you know, our team can manage that. And you wouldn't have the CM layer that runs anywhere from 8% to 10%. Now, when you get projects running, you know, two to three million plus, you really should bring in a CM firm because otherwise we would need like eight people to run that. It's just, it's just this blend of consultants, our staff, and finding that right balance. So some questions. You've been around a construction management bond program. Does option two make sense as presented? And do you have any questions, comments?
More questions, comments?
I think, you know, I know in the past, we had some very, very quality people working with Mr. Head Young managing bond programs in the past quite effectively. And we've been very, very fortunate over the years to have almost no litigation involving any project. Maybe a few bankruptcies here and there, but on part of contractors. But as far as, you know, to manage a project capably, we've had good staff in the past that can do that.
I think also, I agree, option two makes a lot of sense. I really appreciate having this conversation now, especially in this time of transition for the district and the board. And also just because it's been so many years since we started a bond program. I have to say that I'm sitting here touching iron and knocking wood because I also don't want to feel like I'm jinxing this in any way. And I hope that the community understands that this is pre-planning. I really hope that we can put these plans into action, but we will not know obviously for sure until November 8th.
So I think I'm going to be the dissenting voice. I actually would prefer option one. And my reason is I have a different recollection of us doing more projects in-house. And that was a recollection with a lot of complaints from teachers and from principals about the pace of things getting done. I think, you know, Mr. Head Young is a one-person show and we asked a lot and it didn't get done. And so we also paid a price for waiting and not being able to do things. So while we pay perhaps a construction management company 8% to 10%, there's a cost to waiting every year. That's averaged at about 5%. And a lot of projects waited a long time because we didn't have the capacity in-house. I think people have heard me talk about the capacity and her, over and over in different issues. And so for me, my recollection is different. I feel like since we've had a construction management company that has taken over, the communication to the board, I feel, has been much more clear. We've had the vision, we've had the smaller breakdowns of like where we're at with the projects and with the spending. I think the quality and the pace has also been there. So I don't feel like, I mean, we have to be clear that our facilities department is still doing the dated in-out stuff of when something doesn't work, a light doesn't work, when there's, when it's hot. How do we, you know, how do we address that? And so I feel like, given that that's still happening, I don't know that I feel comfortable, definitely not with three or even two, just because I've seen a different model and the pace, the quality, and the information flow has actually worked best for me. And I think in the long run, the cost that we pay makes sense in order, again, for the quality and the pace to be there. And this is in no way, I think if Mr. Head Young's department had more staff members there, I might feel differently. But I really have felt that it's a department that took a lot of hits during the recession. We minimized the number of staff there and it's grown to a small extent, but I personally don't think this district has the capacity. And I feel like this is a really big investment and I've been happy with the last few years of how things have been flowing. So I would say, for me, I would actually choose option one.
Ms. Alson?
Down the line. I know. I myself tend to do, if I can do it myself, I do it myself. If I can't, I hire somebody. So I tend to like option two because I think it's an understanding that you take what's needed and get the expertise when needed, as far as that. My experience in the last four years, and I'd be curious, I know we've had management companies doing things, most recently, when did that change? When, when was it purely?
About four years ago.
Okay. So, so I haven't seen the district handling things on their own, which is what I thought. Okay.
Six years. Okay.
Yeah.
I actually like option two. And I think part of, part of that is because we have staff who know our facilities. And they know them intimately in lots of different ways. And I think that's a different set of eyes as opposed to hiring someone and then getting them up to speed as to what we have, you know? It's like we know, we have a known quantity, so to speak. And there are pluses and minuses of going in that direction, obviously. But I think with having the ability of staff to look towards hiring outside when they know they're, over their heads, that's a definite positive. And I think that that will help when, when sort of you can't do it by yourself, you need, you need expertise. I think that fits with what I would envision as appropriate balance.
Just to back up a little bit, my comments were related to dealing with bond issues. I think we had a staff that was really capable of doing that. The issues of everyday maintenance facilities, to me, that's a separate issue and the bond part of it should not interfere with making sure everyday aggravations get taken care of. And so the staff has to be almost divided between, here are the people for the bonds and they're not to be taken from the people who are doing everyday stuff. And when I joined the board, everyday stuff was not getting done. And that's the stuff that, that we can't have. We've got to make sure we have a staff that takes care of the maintenance plan, the everyday activity. And we can't say, oh, sorry, we can't fix that door because we're working on a bond. That doesn't work.
Well, the reason why I put Steve Vizzolini's name up there is, he's probably the guy that knows our every nook and cranny as best as anybody. And even though he's not involved in the bond facility modernization work, his presence at meetings is really his presence at meetings is really important because he can guide people to, okay, here's what you're going to find, you know, behind that wall. And also, it's his team that's going to maintain the facilities once they're done. And so he's not going to be involved with the bond program per se, but just, you know, consulting with him is really helpful. You know, I found that those two roles, the Steve Vizzolini role, that's really the maintenance operation, you know, supervisor. But then Dave's role is really the facilities modernization work. Those roles really overlap enough that they should both be involved. Steve needs to be present, but Steve should not be managing any day-to-day bond work. That would be mostly Dave's efforts. Okay. Other questions, comments? Tell the feedback. So it's been actually six years as I just listened to Ms. Lamone's comments. So two years and then four years.
I think, I think we changed system with Dr. Cash's employment.
Okay, so that was about 2011. Okay. Any other questions?
No, I would echo the same comments that Mr. Heron made in terms of making sure that we are not sort of putting on the back burner, the, the day-to-day stuff. Because I think those are always critically important. But I think that you're considering that in this option number two.
And I just want to be clear that that was a big issue. So it's, I mean, there has been, that was an issue. Like this, exactly what we want to avoid has already happened. So I just want to be sure that as we move forward, we keep in mind that that's already happened in this district.
Part of the reason why this report's coming to, it's not presuming that the vote's going to be us. But if we don't do any discussion with the board and pre-plan this, I've watched districts take six months to, to ramp up. And then the community goes, well, we voted for that six months ago. There needs to be evidence of projects on the ground in summer of 2017, should the bond pass. And, and we could do that if we pre-plan and, and get organized. So that's the reason for this report. And at the end of the report, you'll see a list of three future reports that are related. So we need to really explain to, the, the struggle is waiting until the new board is seated. If I, if I wait, it's going to be a really long set of board meetings. I think by placing it in the reports, you know, the new board members can read it. But you need to understand how bonds are sold on the bond market. And that's, that's not a simple process. And we need to get rerated. We need to figure out which bond underwriter we're going to work with. And KNN has been the financial advisor for, it sounds like a long time. And I've worked with KNN in my last district, so I'm comfortable with that firm. Second is we need to review construction delivery methods. And there was just a ruling today about lease, leaseback. And I, I haven't read it. Lease, leaseback has been a really difficult delivery method to use since the Fresno case unfolded. It's still a viable delivery method, but it's probably not one that we would want to use.
Prior to that, we used it extensively and it was perfect.
Yeah, we used it, we started to use it in Milpitas. It's a really good delivery method, but there've been a lot of challenges in, in the courts. So there, there's other ways to deliver projects. And the last one, and I know the board would be interested in this a lot, is, so we have some rough draft detail, or we said rough draft, big picture project lists. But they're very big picture. We need to figure out site by site, what would each site receive? And it's, it's of my opinion and strong recommendation, every site must see a benefit somehow. You know, we can't leave a, a site off entirely. But there's some sites that have deep needs and others that are in good shape. So.
We have a very detailed list of projects that are included in the bond language and been approved by this board. But with the knowledge that times change.
Right.
But it's, it's a pretty cross-section of the highest priorities in the district.
I've, I've, say, I've read SCIM, the LPA report.
That's different.
And that, that's a really big one. I've seen the short one. I think I need to see one that Kate sent to me just a couple days ago. So that, that might be actually really helpful for me to, to understand what are the priorities for a project.
There's a very detailed list and the LPA is a pie in the sky kind of thing. Has a roadmap that we received. We didn't approve. We didn't, we received it. But I won't be around, but everybody here knows that my comment statement was we need to take care of the highest priority items. And regardless of where they are. And that's just my personal feeling.
Yeah. Yeah, we will make sure to look at those, those top priorities.
Ms. Lamone?
I have a question about process. So I noticed that the RFP is already up on our website. It got posted yesterday from Construction Management Services for the bond. So, and then we talked also about the bond underwriting company. So why wouldn't we do an RFP for that too? I'm just trying to understand process.
Yeah, the, we need to talk this through with the KNN consultant. The, the bond underwriting scene, it, it's changed a lot since I first started working on construction bond programs. The old days, it used to be you just go out to the market and you'd get the lowest price. The bond underwriting scene is, it's different today. We just had a first meeting with our KNN consultant. So I need to understand the market today. And then we'll, we'll bring an, I'd say, an updated approach of what our financial advisor would recommend. Our financial advisor firms, they're under a, a lot of appropriate scrutiny from a fiduciary standpoint. They now have to sign documents stating that they truly deeply are, they have to represent us in all fairness. So the bond underwriters, that market's changed. I need to catch up with what's different today and then we'll bring you that report. We may very likely bring our bond counsel to that meeting, David Casenoca, because he will be the person who has to write up all those bond statements.
Well, I just, I wanted to understand why in some cases we would go through an RFP and in other cases we wouldn't go through RFP. So I, yeah, that would be, I think, important to consider. And the other piece is actually, we in the past, we have had board participation in the selection of program, the program management company and also others. And so I would encourage that. Mr. Heron has in the past participated. I think it's really important to also have a board perspective on there. And so I would encourage that for new board members, especially in going through the selection. That that's, that's something that we have a board member involved with.
I think for, for me, when I participated in the architectural pool, it's as much an education process as having a board perspective. So having at least two board members gives this board more, more background, the ability to understand what exactly is it that we were looking for and be able to articulate back to the board, to, to the whole board.
So for the architectural selection process, were two board members on that panel?
And, and Heron myself.
Okay. Okay. So it's the desire of the board to have board representation on the?
On the selection committees for whatever moves forward. So whether it's the architectural, program management, I think others to move, yeah, to have board representation on there.
Okay. We're looking at an interview window in November? So are volunteers?
Yeah, if I'm available, definitely.
Oh, it might not be before November 17th.
Please remember that you are not done until December 13th.
That's right. We could call a special board meeting anytime.
Whatever. Sorry, we can't go into Thanksgiving with like, oh, happy trails to you.
I mean, if you have the dates, I think you could probably share the dates with the board and the board could then jump in. If the dates aren't selected yet, then I mean, yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll look at the calendar. We'll get it out to the board. And it sounds like Mr. Heron and Dr. Paz have been members in the past. But we can certainly make it open to any board member.
It was fun. Mr. Tay spent the whole day next to you.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that feedback.
Any other questions, board comments? If not, that is the end of our agenda. Board, any coming events, future agenda items?
Future agenda item, the possible changing of the date of the November meeting. Is that going to be on the agenda for our next meeting?
Sorry, I was distracted.
Yeah. The change of the November meeting date, is that going to be on our next agenda of moving from the November, Tuesday the 15th to Thursday the 17th?
All right, I believe the board is in agreement that the Thursday, November 17th works, everybody's calendar. We've checked with cabinet, so they're all available. So what we will do is we'll put into the consent agenda a change of the board meeting from November 15th to the 17th.
Great.
And we'll get that up on our calendars immediately.
Great.
Any future agenda items besides that one?
Nope.
All right. Coming events? No? If not, I would like to adjourn this evening's meeting.
And I guess our next one will be on a Monday.
Monday, October 10th.
Yep.